Good evening, welcome to the April meeting of Hamlet City Council. Called meeting to order at this time, we would ask for a moment of silence. Amen.
Amen.
Council, that next item of business is the adoption of the agenda. Please make note that we want to add item number six A, which is consideration of revolution- resolutions twenty twenty-two oh three and twenty twenty-two oh four grant applications to the state. That'll be added on to six A.
I'd like to also add a closed session for personnel issue.
I thought that's on there.
It said.
Yeah. It's on there.
Okay.
All right, okay.
I see, I seen privilege.
Anyway, consideration of and regarding the grant applications to the state and adding the closed session, North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A four for economic development. Council, what do you wish is on the agenda?
Make a motion, approve.
All right, got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Council, you have before you the minutes for the March twenty-second, twenty-two regular meeting. What are your wishes on those?
Make a motion to accept.
Got a motion to accept?
Sir.
Got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the comment from attendees. If you have something tonight that you wish to address council with, if you please come up to the podium and state your name, we'd be glad to hear from you. Yes, sir, come on up, state your name and.
Never spoke in front of anybody like this before. I'm new here, but I see a lot of empty buildings. And I came for a place where there's a lot of empty buildings and it don't get any better unless you do something about it. So I'd like to do something about it if I could get some, a little help from somebody. Is that possible? I've talked to some of the business owners around here. They like me, they like my ideas, so you guys can.
We've got several people right now that are working on issues down there. And we've got one lady that she's working on it as she can. She's got a building on Hamlet Avenue and she's working on at least two buildings down here. We've got Mr. James who has renovated several of those buildings down there and is trying to rent them. So that's.
Well, I mean, there's some, I don't know, I don't know who owns what or what, but I would like to see what's available. I would like to take one for myself, I can get it for tax money owed or whatever. I got money, I got labors, I can fix one of those.
That would be much appreciated. If you have a, if you find a particular building down there that you're interested in, if you'll talk to our city clerk, she can look it up and see who owns it.
Yes, I, I have a couple.
Okay, well, she'll, if you give her the, come in and give her the address and she'll look them up for you and see who owns them, what the tax value on a property is.
And where do I do that, sir?
That young lady right there, she's in the, in the office right back there.
Oh, okay, right.
Yeah.
I mean, in the morning or?
That's between you and her.
Is that?
I'm here from eight to five.
You're Mrs. Strickland, am I right?
That's right.
And may I get your name for a minute, please?
I'm sorry.
Your name?
My name is Lloyd Gill.
Okay, thank you.
What is it, Lloyd?
Gill, G.I.L.L.
Oh, okay. We certainly appreciate it, anything you can do to help us, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now we'll work with you.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Has anyone else got anything for council tonight? Any, okay. If not, we'll move on to the consideration of the resolutions on the federal funds. Matt?
Yes, sir, mayor.
Do you like to comment on the?
Yeah, there's a resolution in your packet which begins kind of a slew of various policies. These policies are required by the uniform guidance for the ARPA money or the recovery plan money. There's five policies included for your consideration tonight. They include the eligible use policy, the allowable cost and cost principles policy, the non-discrimination policy, record retention policy, and the conflict of interest policy. These have all been adapted for our local government from model ordinances and, or policies from the school of government, and they've been reviewed by our attorney, and we put them all in one resolution for, for your consideration tonight.
And it's, these are not going to make any difference in the way we operate at this time, and it's not going to cost us any money. Council, what do you wishes on the?
Move that we adopt.
A second.
A motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
You're not gonna read?
No. Okay. Those were all under that. Let me go over and check my notes. And if anybody wants to see these resolutions, please come into City Hall when I'm available. Next item of business is budget amendments for the fourth quarter. Oh, I thought that's what we just did. Oh, okay, all right. Let me pull these two out. Could you comment on those?
Yes, sir, mayor, I'd be happy to. These are two resolutions that we've added to the agenda tonight. They're for applying for some more grant funds from the state, which is a pool that they've opened up of the federal funds that the state received, has opened up grant funding for infrastructure. There's two resolutions because we're looking at two specific aspects of our infrastructure to apply for grants. One is the water treatment plant. We talked a lot about the wastewater treatment plant, but the water treatment plant has a lot of needs too. So we're gonna put a grant application in for the water treatment plant as well as the distribution, or I'm sorry, as well as the wastewater collection system, so pump stations, collection lines, things of that nature. We don't have an exact budget of what we're going to apply for quite yet, but the maximum award is fifteen million dollars for each entity. So we'll be applying for the maximum, we're probably looking at like a sixty forty split between the water treatment plant and the, and the collection system. So that's why there's two separate resolutions, but it's essentially just to authorize us to apply for grant funding.
Is this gonna be a matching grant or is it gonna be?
No, this is a hundred percent, as far as we know, well, depends on what the projects we apply for and what they award us. If they don't award us the full amount, we may have to go borrow some money to, to get what we need to get done, done. But we'll know more about that when they issue the award.
Cross that bridge when we get to it.
What's the scope of the projects that you're looking for for water treatment?
Yeah, the water treatment, really, we're looking at, primarily looking at the clarifiers, the clear wells, I mean, not the clarifiers, the clear wells. We had one go down January of twenty twenty, and that actually affected some of our data, which is reported on a quarterly basis, so we got violations for a long time. And those are the types of things that we're trying to get ahead of by applying for funds like this. But that's the main, that'll be the bulk of it. We'll probably also look at some demolition, some of those buildings are out there are really old, and also the workers, the employees who work out there and staff the plant twenty-four seven, they have to go kind of outside to go to each individual place. There's no covered walkways or anything like that, there's no asphalt at the water treatment plant. So things like that will probably be the big ticket items, asphalt, the, the clear wells, and then just other miscellaneous things.
So you're gonna ask for a lot of money?
Yeah, I mean, we're probably gonna ask for, yeah, I mean, like I said, we're, we're kind of considering a sixty forty split of the fifteen million, so, you know, it may be eight or nine towards the plant and then, you know, five or six towards.
Collection.
For the collection system, pump stations, lines, things of that nature.
Okay.
That's a good idea about that covering because I've been down there and it's all metal walkways and metal steps. If it gets wet or it snows and they gotta walk on that, oh, that's bad.
Yeah, it's very, our, our folks run it really well, but it's, it's an old plant and it's been adapted over the years, and so it's, try to do some things to make it more efficient.
Council, what are your wishes on these two?
Move that we adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Now we can go on to the budget amendments for the fourth quarter. And it looks like we've had to make some adjustments for the police department in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, am I correct?
That's correct, mayor.
Okay, looks like we've had to increase to fourteen thousand for police fuel, so everybody's fuel's going up. And I didn't see anything on here, but what's happening about the fuel for these diesel trucks and stuff?
I was wondering, how's that, how are they the only ones that had an increase like that in fuel?
They're not the only ones. Several of the other fuel accounts, we have adjusted them, but they've been adjusted within the department. So there's been no change to the, the department doesn't increase, it's just a transfer between the line items and.
Okay.
But we've projected out, you know, we've, we've had, obviously, everybody's had a substantial increase, so.
One of them was this professional service.
Yeah, so the professional service is primarily, a few things go into professional services that we're looking at adjusting for the upcoming budget. A few things that weren't accounted for were some software expense that we got for the first time last year for the AVL systems that's in the cars that wasn't budgeted for in, in the previous budget. So we've had to kind of adapt there, and there's also been some other software needs that we didn't account for in, when we prepared the budget in twenty-one, twenty-two that, you know, it's just, it's just where we're at to get to the end of the year.
Council, what are your wishes on the budget amendment?
I don't see where we got any choice but to approve the budget amendment. So I'd make a motion that we approve the budget amendment.
Okay, I got a motion. I got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. All right, looking now, item number eight is approval of the tax releases. What we got on that? What do you wishes on these releases, council? The total amount's a hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Move that we approve.
Got a motion to approve.
A second.
A second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Yeah, very good. Moving along to other business now, city managers report.
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor. The first thing I'd like to mention is that we'll be closed Friday in observance of Good Friday. There will be no change in the garbage schedule or any of our pickups that doesn't affect our normal routes. We'll be handling commercial folks early that week, so you can kind of, business as usual for the garbage pickup, even though we are closed on Friday. We are doing some work on the water tank and you'll see them up there doing work regularly. If you have any concerns, please call us. We've been in touch with several folks that had questions or concerns and we're available to help if you have any questions, but they'll probably be up there for several weeks, maybe a month, while they're working on repairing the, the water tank, which is a routine repair. They wash it out, they repair it as needed, and then they seal it up if they need to and, you know, put coatings on the liners, things like that. We are beginning our spring event series, which is something that we're really excited about. In the month of April, we have several ongoing events throughout the month that I hope folks come out and support. Of course, the food truck started last week and we'll have another food truck Friday on the twenty-second. We're having a cruise in on April, I said, on April the tenth, from three to six, there'll be a cruise in.
That was last Sunday.
Sorry?
That was last Sunday.
April the tenth was last Sunday.
Oh, yeah, excuse me.
We've already had that.
That's right, we already had the food truck too, but we're having another food truck. We're not having another cruise in quite yet. We're gonna have yoga on the twenty-first, and then I'm excited to announce that we'll have the Sand Band at, on April twenty-fourth. And that will be at three P.M. on the twenty-fourth, and we hope folks come out and support that. They're a great group, they got a good following, we're really excited about it.
I heard good things about the food truck and about the car show. They said that they had really good response to the food trucks. I think they had some more, and then the car show had food trucks too.
Yeah.
Who sponsors the, the Sand Band? I mean, how'd they get here?
The, the Sand Band?
Yeah.
We had money in special event budgets to pay for the Sand Band.
City's paying for it.
The city's paying for it, that's right.
Have, have we nailed anything down yet on the fireworks?
Yes, actually, I, I'm sorry, I meant to mention that. We were able to transfer money from professional services without a budget amendment, so that has been secured, the data's secured, and we're moving forward with the fireworks. Michelle's got several other activities planned, including.
That'd be good.
Yeah, music and I think we're looking at maybe getting like a training for the kids, something for the kids to do, and things like that, so we encourage folks to come out and set up. We'll have, may have some food trucks or things of that nature to have a good time and, and bring that tradition back to him.
Michelle is doing excellent job down there.
Mm-hmm.
She really is, I, it's just moving along. And the senior center the same way, they're just very quietly, but they keep everything going. Got the best senior center in the, in the cause. Okay. Okay, we'll move along to comments of council. Ed?
Well, I don't have a whole lot other than what the city manager said about the activities. There's a plan for the Fourth of July coming up, sound like things are, are being put into place, but it really needs to be promoted in the, in the media, in the news, the radios or whatever, newspapers. But it really needs to be promoted quite often about what's coming. And maybe we'll have a tremendous crowd, that's what I'm looking for.
Does the chamber do any kind of promotion of those events for us?
They assist us quite a bit in preparing, preparing our materials and sharing our stuff on Facebook. I'm not sure what else they, they do for us, but I can get with Michelle and make sure we're.
Yeah, tourism, tourism's a good one, and the chamber, you know, Jonathan's really active and supportive of things all over the county, so.
Yeah, Michelle and Jonathan work really closely.
Exactly.
He even helps us with, like I said, some of our materials, preparing them and getting them out there and sharing them when we post them, and we have a really great relationship with them and visit Richmond County. But noted, yes, sir.
Oscar?
I'd just like to thank the city of Hamlet, our mayor, council, city manager, and all the stakeholders for a great job, and just wish everyone a very, very safe Easter holiday. And just remember what one is for, and give praise to that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Abby?
I want to mention, talk about promotion. Eden Buie's Catering having their ribbon cutting on.
Friday.
Friday at noon time, yeah. That's a restaurant downtown and their, their official opening, I guess is what we call that. They're having their ribbon cutting on Friday at noon time. So I think, I went to one over in Rockingham at Norton Farms on Fri- last Friday, and they had a good crowd, good, good support from the community, so let's try to do as well for them. And I just wondered about the progress at the park, Legion Park, Memorial Park. Excuse me.
Yeah, great question. They started painting. They started painting today, so they're pressure washing and painting everything. They've done some demo in the bathrooms, and so that'll get painted after their, when they paint everything. We've ordered a bunch of clay and some other things that will help revitalize the turf and get the field looking sharp. We've ordered a scoreboard, it's set to be delivered, we're waiting to receive that. As soon as it gets delivered, we'll put it in, and one of the big ticket items is the lights. We've had trouble with the supply on the lights, so we've kind of shifted our focus towards repairing the lights that are in place, and we're waiting on the electrician to come out. They, they gotta rent a piece of equipment to get up that high, but we've, we've set up that rental, and the electrician is getting on the schedule to be out here before the first games start in May. So those are the.
So the first game is in May?
Or, sorry, they were looking at late May, but I think the first one actually on the schedule is in June.
Okay, so.
Early June.
I was just wondering if they were gonna do anything by, by Memorial Day. Did anybody approach Duke Energy about helping us with that?
Yes, Duke Energy has, they, they haven't, they're not able to help with the lights themselves. I did ask if they had any, you know, contact with suppliers and things of that nature.
That's what I was wondering.
And I'm waiting to hear back. The one thing they may help us with is, is we discussed in a previous meeting about the netting and, and maybe making some improvements to, to the netting to make sure that our folks that visit us are safe. One of the things they may be able to help us with is getting some surplus poles, but they haven't been able to confirm those are available quite yet.
Okay, all right.
While she's on that, I know that you and I have both talked to Mr. Richardson about the American Legion building out there. Have we got a handle on that bathroom now? At one time we had a problem, they would leave it open for us, but they would trash it. And then we weren't cleaning it up, and I got a call from him last week and he said it's, it's trashed again. You know, it's got to be unlocked and then locked up again when they get through at night.
Yeah, I, I, when we, when that occurred, I did speak to him and we did make some, I think we did some addition to the cleanup, the mess that was in there.
Yeah.
We made some improvement, I think they put in a clean out, did some other things so they could make sure the lines run smooth. But I haven't heard anything since then.
Well, it's got to be locked up at night. When they get through down there, it's got to be locked up. So somebody needs to be responsible for that, whether it's the police department or who it is, somebody needs to, okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
Mr. Stewart, do you have any comments tonight? Okay. Mr. McQueen?
Just a couple. So piggybacking off what Ms. Covington brought about the park, I know we got a lot that's going on down there, but it, it needs some, like attention, like the grass. There's a couple of pallets that's leaned up against the concession stand, the bathroom's been there for two or three months. Right around the sign right there in the parking lot area, it, it just looks horrible. And I know we've, you know, we're re-renovating and all, but, I mean, those are some things that we can do. I mean, that's what everybody sees when they ride by.
You referring to the field in one seventy-seven?
Uh.
Memorial Field.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Right there at Spring Street.
Yeah.
I'm talking about that parking area right there.
Can I say about why you're on that, allude to it about trimming up the fences?
Oh, yes, I was gonna, yeah, so like, the bushes are just out of control. It just needs some, some attention.
With the bushes, do you think we should remove them entirely, or what is your, do you have an opinion on that?
I don't know, I mean, whatever the council was saying, I mean.
I agree with you. I, I rode out there yesterday.
I know we've tried before to cut them back.
You can just up or just cut them back?
You don't want it to be where you can go out there, you don't want people standing there watching the games because they're in, they're near the road, you just don't want that. We put some kind of fabric up one time and that was horrible, it just didn't work.
No.
Actually, I don't think it was the fabric for that, I think it was just something that we.
Landscape fabric.
Yeah, like landscape, it was horrible. So one or the other, I mean, I'm just saying that it needs something done to it now, it's just horrible looking. And that parking lot, especially right there where the sign's at, it looks.
Spring Street parking lot.
Right there at Spring Street, yeah. And there was some people out there playing tennis the other day too, and I used to go out there and play tennis a long time ago. I mean, and it used to have some, some bad areas where grass was coming up. Just make sure, that is being used, that is being used, but.
I saw those people too.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely needs some attention. I mean, I'm not saying go out there and spend hours upon hours and then we're going and tearing it up, but I mean, there's some things that, it needs to be looking a little bit better than it is now.
Then we put new nets on it last year.
Yes.
Then we put new nets on it last year.
I think we did, but I'm not sure. I know though.
We did.
They were rotten.
We did.
They're falling apart.
I, and I don't know, I didn't see anything on there, but it does have a, a history of grass growing up through the cracks and all out there. The fairgrounds, same thing. If you're coming, if you're going towards Laurenburg, when you look, and I know they have trouble with it whenever it rains a lot, getting in there and getting it cut, but I think that probably now it'd be a good time to, to at least try it. Because if we're not careful, that's gonna scoot all the way over and it's gonna just take that whole place up. Boy, you know it, you, you've lost the whole thing, in, in my opinion. And, I mean, that's things we can do now that won't cost anything other than the people that's working.
The labor, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and those are some things that people see that, you know, especially right there, they're both on the main drag coming in. And I talked to you, I don't even remember what day it was, by text about the water tank. They're running a generator down there apparently, or there is a generator being run down there for some reason?
Air compressor.
I think, yeah, so I went up there and looked at it after, we texted about it. The Friday before, there was a generator running, but I think it was just, it was cycling, like a maintenance cycle.
Okay, that would be our generator though.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're not running a generator up there?
They are running a welder and an air compressor and a sandblaster. So there are loud pieces of equipment.
Well, no, this was like, the, the, not really a complaint, but the issue was the fumes of the, the generator. And I just, you know, I know ours is up there and that's just part of it, but if they were running something like that, I was gonna see if we could like, do something to try to funnel the exhaust to go a different direction, but if it's just ours running once a week or every now and then.
Just, just to be crystal clear, it's not our generator, there's another crew that's, that's working on the utility building that's right underneath.
Thought we had a generator down there too for.
We, we do, but I think they, they have that, that utility building generator running while they're doing some maintenance on site.
While everybody's kind of working it. I talked to them on the phone, I went by, they wasn't there, so I'm gonna go back and I will, I'll give you a call and just talk to you.
It's a good sized generator.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the big green thing out there, the air compressor.
What was the complaint?
The generator was running and the fumes was.
Exhaust fumes.
Exhaust fumes, it ran for a while.
Uh-huh.
And it was like, really big exhaust in that area. They live like, right there where it was at.
Well, they'll be running that air compressor.
Yeah. It wasn't so much the noise, it was, it was the fumes, yeah.
That's where the looking Theresa and Presser used to live, the house on the corner, I think.
And, and.
And across the street, yeah.
We weren't sure why that generator was running. I, I talked to Robert Brown who looks over our utilities, water tanks, things of that nature out, specifically in that area. And he, he mentioned that that generator was running in the utility building, he wasn't sure why it was running, but that was the only time it ran, and it's not part of the water tank work.
Okay, and there was some issue about maybe they drove through the corner of this person's yard or something? I, I've got to go back by there and talk to the person. They were not there when I went by there Monday, but I'll, I'll just get with you personally on that.
Sure. I haven't talked with him, but I knew exactly what you were talking about.
Right, it's, yeah, and, 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 yeah, and I went down there, I mean, I took a picture and it looked.
I wouldn't like it.
No, I definitely wouldn't like it either, but I mean, they're, they've got it concealed, sealed off as good they can.
That's right.
On the work. And I just want to give a, a shout out to the police department real quick. So I was, I saw something on Facebook the other day and I just, I wanted to bring it up. So there's been a lot of issues with illegal drugs and all. And according to the Facebook page of the Hamlet Police Department, they've actually got warrants on somebody for a death that occurred through a distribution of narcotics. And that, I've ne- I've not seen that, if, if I have seen it any, anywhere around here, it's been a long time ago. And if you want to sort of get a handle on some of this stuff, put them in jail. Or you got to do something, you can't just, can't just let it keep going. And their hands are tied on some things they can and can't do through state and federal issues, but that was something that definitely needed to be, you know, good job because that takes some investigation to get that done. I mean, it really did. And we had a rough stretch in this county with drug-related deaths. And that was one of the things that made me, I, I, that's a, it's a really big accomplishment, I just wanted to bring that up, so.
The Daily Journal had a good article on it. Okay.
And, and, and that's it, I don't have anything else.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stewart?
I just wanted to say, speaking of that, I want us to get with the police department up on Seaboard Street and maybe Hamlet Avenue, those orange red looking apartments. We have got to get in some kind of partnership with them to alleviate people from hanging out.
Go out Washington Court?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, they did for a while and.
We have got, if, if, we got, I mean, the owner of that, we gotta push their, we gotta push the pin on them. And I don't know what we have to do, and I'm, I'm gonna get with police department, but I want us to partner with them in some kind of way. Every day I pass through there, there's fifteen, twenty people hanging. Every day I pass through there, there's fifteen, twenty people hanging. Outside, playing cards, drinking, smoking, waiting for more gunshots or more whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we are, we're always reactive to that and I just want us to kinda be proactive to that. So, just so we can kinda put that on the, we gotta talk to them about that.
Yeah, I spoke with one of the property owners, uh, neighboring property owners yesterday, actually.
Oh, really, okay.
Yep, and, um, and I, the, I, after that conversation and I, I, I assured that property owner that, I know they've probably talked to, you know, people like, you know, different city managers over time, different police chiefs over time, but I assured him we would do everything we could, uh, to help and I wanted to establish a good point of contact for them, so that when they see something, they can say something. And I sent an email to the police chief and he's gonna be reaching out and that's gonna be part of a concerted effort to continue the work that we've been doing in, in the Washington Street and Washington Avenue area.
The ownership was open to that?
Oh, yeah, uh, well, yeah, uh, en- emphatically, yeah.
All right.
Where, where does the people live on that complex now?
I'm not certain, I'd have to look it up, but we could find out.
Cool. I wholeheartedly agree with what Marie said, I mean, it's time, it's, it's time to, to take back those areas that folks are coming. Cause let me tell you, and, and this has been years ago whenever I was on the police department, right? So, the people coming in that's causing the problem, for the most part, don't live in these areas.
Right.
And it's heartbreaking whenever you go, uh, to these areas and you see these, a, a lot of times they're retired people and, you know, older residents and they're basically being terrorized because these, these young people are coming in and they don't even live there. Um, so, we really, we, and not just us, I mean, but that's a problem across the board. And we really need to get behind and support, like Marie said, support the good actions that the police department, sheriff's department does and try to give these folks that live in these areas some relief.
Well, I think one thing.
They're, they're, they're getting, they're getting hammered.
I, I, I have, somebody had mentioned the problem to me the other day, it's been ten days or two weeks ago. And I shared the concern of the gentleman with the police chief and they actually, it, it's an area that's been an ongoing problem and forever and a day and he said, "Our problem is, we go and it's when we get there, nobody saw anything."
That's right.
Nobody saw anything, you know, they're upset, but nobody sees anything.
Jesse and I were, were, they had the chief over there.
Yeah.
And so, um, they were able, after that, they, they knew there was, the guy said, "There's three drug houses there and they do da-da-da-da-da." And so, I just shared that with the police chief and they arrested two of the primary suspects that were dealing drugs in the area and got them, they're, they'll be in jail a while. So, that should cool it off. He's very, the police department is very responsive.
Yeah, anytime you tell them about something, he's, I mean, he's definitely on it, probably more so than in the past many years. So, that's a good thing too and in, in no way am I criticizing them, I'm just telling you, there is like, an exorbitant amount of places that's having these issues and, and most times, two or three people working.
Oh, yeah.
It's just a constant struggle, but you gotta do something, you either arrest them or get them to move away, do, get them out of that area, look, I mean, you gotta do something. Because our citizens don't need to have to deal with it.
Nor the neighborhoods, nor the people living, and probably the reason that you don't hear anything or see anything is, as you said, terrorists, they're, they're afraid.
They're terrified.
They're afraid, yeah, terrified of what, of what happened, uh, they're never do it.
This guy said, "One man had thirteen cameras in his yard."
Had what?
Thirteen cameras in his yard.
Wow. Hmm.
He said, "The Sunday before that, the people next door got in a fight and the fight ended up in his front yard." I think he had just had it, at that point, he didn't care what he did.
Well, nobody wanna.
You don't, no, people will not have to live with that kind of fear.
No.
Okay, uh, moving along, did you finish?
No, I'm behind you.
All right. Um, kudos to Duke Energy for the new streetlights out here, that's, that's wonderful, I'm so glad they did that. Uh, I don't know how the project's coming over there on Hamlet Avenue.
I hope they're up there. Oh, they're further along.
Okay, good.
They started at Hamlet Avenue, they've worked their way to.
All right, very, but it's really nice, if you haven't ridden downtown at night, you need to do it. Um. The, uh, Lions Club has secured a ride group to be able to have the fair this fall. Uh, we'll be having it from the twelfth to the sixteenth of October and, uh, it looks like right now we won't have any chickens because the chickens all got flu and, uh, that's right, they're not, uh, letting them, show them.
Oh, God.
So, uh, it's good to have that and, uh, one other thing is this is something we've dealt with for the last several years and it comes and goes. The trash that people are bringing in and dropping right behind the city limit sign on Wiregrass Road. And, uh, I rode by there the other day and there's a hu- there's a mattress out there and a bunch of other stuff. Billy's been real good about picking it up, but I think if, the more we pick it up, the less of it we're gonna see. As you know, you, you find a place to dump trash, everybody will start dumping it, but we know what they're doing, they're bringing it in from outside of town, dumping it in the city. So, if people out there, if somebody out there would just call us when they see something, uh, we don't have to know who they are, but at least we can maybe get out there and do something about it, so.
Why don't we put a camera out there?
Well, that'd be a good idea, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
About that, that'll stop it.
Or to help it, and it's not just the Wiregrass Road where all the trash is at, Boyd Lake Road.
Oh, I know, yeah.
You get up, you go out there and pass the city limit sign, it's just, well, it's everywhere across, not only Richmond County, about every county you go to.
And if we nip it off before we end up with a truckload, maybe.
Yeah.
But we had, apparently, we went a while after we last time and it wasn't bad, but Billy has a constant battle picking up trash out there.
Sure does.
If you check it, usually they'll throw something away with their address on it.
Yeah.
And on that same line, just have them be aware if there's, like, if they see contractors working, to know who it is and if they go back and, I mean, there's contractors, not all of them, there's some of them, that are bringing stuff and dumping it into town and we're having to pick it up.
Absolutely.
And we need to get a handle on that too.
We, I agree. Yeah, we're underwriting their expense, is what we're doing.
Want to wish everybody a very happy Easter and I hope everything goes well, the weather's gonna be beautiful. Uh, if you have outside fires, watch them, we're having a lot of problems across the county right now with, uh, outside fires and they will get away from you before you know it, it's, uh, the grass tops are dry and one spark, it hit that grass top and it's gone, you're gonna have to have a fire department. But please watch, you don't wanna burn a neighbor's house or anything, so, yeah.
Going back to that, uh, putting up, uh, cameras, that's a great idea, Eddie, but could they put, could we put some sign, no littering signs across beside the road, because if we find the people and up to a certain amount of money, fine, if they're caught, uh, doing it. So, they would be noticeable, I don't know if that would deter it or not, but would be, could we have some signs put up on the side of the road, no littering, littering twenty-five?
You know, five hundred, fine for no, for dumping.
Yeah, for, uh, five hundred dollar fine for dumping and this kinda stuff and then when they are caught, process it, enforce it.
That's some of what I was wanting, y'all, you know, y'all will look into.
Look into those, yeah, I think that'll work, it'll help anyway.
Right, and see if it could be attached to that.
Attached, yeah.
And see, that's a.
The, the, I don't think there's any, um, issue with enforcing it, signs are not, I mean, I think signs are a great idea. Um, but that doesn't necessarily mean we can't enforce it, the problem is catching them and enforcing it and having people communicate with us when they see something.
That's right.
To say something or if we have other tools like cameras were mentioned, um, you know, that we use those tools to, 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 to catch these people that are doing this.
Well, I just wonder if maybe the. That's a state road, so it would be a state citation rather than a local.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's, it's a state road, so it would be a, a state infraction rather than a.
City, yeah.
Which they, we have a hard time with courts over there on city stuff.
Big time, I just wonder if maybe the county, it, it, it could get, it included these areas in their weekly or monthly pickup. I think they go around the trash collection and put them in the route.
They're too busy cleaning up around the airport, the trash, the time they, time they pick it up.
Oh, boy.
You go down through there and they got trashed again.
I agree.
And, uh, but anyway, okay. Uh, moving along to item number twelve, I need a motion to go into closed session for general statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A., three and four and six, attorney-client privilege, economic development and personnel.
Make a motion.
Have a motion. Have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, we're in closed session.